So it's 6:30 PM on Thursday, June 27th. I've got to turn the sound off. That's what's going on. Okay, there, that's much better. It was me. Okay, at 6:30 PM on Thursday, June 27th, beginning the calling the order of the Emeryville Planning Commission meeting. And I'd like to ask the Secretary for your roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Chafe.
Here.
Commissioner Henme.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Wax.
Here.
Vice Chair Dram.
Here.
And Chair Gazzoni.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, now is the time for a public comment. If there are any audience members who wish to comment on items that are not.
I think you might, pardon me, I think you missed the commission items swearing in.
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Okay, yes.
It's my honor to have been deputized by the city clerk to perform this for our newest Commissioner, Carol Johnson. If you might stand up and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Carol Johnson, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Carol Johnson, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a planning commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
I might need to look at this one.
That's.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a planning commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
Welcome, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you so much.
Okay, congratulations and welcome, Commissioner Johnson. Now I'll move on to public comment now that we've taken care of that. So if any members of the public wish to comment on items that are in the purview of the Planning Commission but are not on tonight's agenda, you have a three-minute period in which you can do so. Are there any members who wish to do that? Okay, it looks like we don't. So moving on, we'll go for approval of the action minutes for our last meeting. Do any commissioners have comments on the minutes to make? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, that looks good. And do we want a roll call vote on that?
Yes, thank you. On the motion to approve the April 25th, 2024 minutes made by Commissioner Chafe, seconded by Commissioner Henme, I will call the roll. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Stain.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram.
Aye.
And Chair Gazzoni.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, now could we have the Director's Report, please?
Absolutely, thank you. It's my report. Since we didn't meet, we have a few more items than usual, but I'll buzz through them quickly. A quick recap of the City Council's actions since our last meeting. On May 7th, the Council proclaimed May as Affordable Housing Month, held a public hearing, and approved the master fee schedule for the next fiscal year, and also approved revised guidelines for our first-time homebuyer program. On May 21st, the Council made the finding of public convenience and necessity that was needed for the liquor license for Total Wine &amp; More, which you approved in April. And the Council approved five semi-finalists for the conceptual design proposals for the 40th Streetscape Public Art Project. On June 4th, the Council adopted the first reading of the auto-centric land uses changes, which you also reviewed and recommended. On June 18th, the Council made various appointments to committees, and as far as the Planning Commission goes, there will be two vacancies as of July on the commission. One applicant to the Planning Commission withdrew their application prior to the Council meeting, so they didn't make any appointments to the Planning Commission. That said, the city clerk will reopen a recruitment in July with anticipated appointments happening at the first meeting of the Council in September, so it shouldn't be too long that we're shorthanded. The Council also on June 18th, adopted the Affordable Housing Table for Fiscal Year 25, adopted the first reading of an ordinance to reduce certain speed limits pursuant to the vehicle code in a recent speed survey, and adopted the program guidelines for the Emeryville Accessible Living Initiative, which is a grant-funded program for residential accessibility upgrades. And that program is being funded by a pro-housing incentive grant, which results from our pro-housing designation by the state. Announcements, the Wildflower Seed Program, which you also recall from the TERF prohibition discussion, has launched, and that provides free seeds for residents. There's information on the city's website. Reach out to Community Services if you'd like to get some seeds. The remediation work at the, what's called the former Marchant Whitney, or the old corporation yard on Horton, that work commenced in late May, which is a great milestone. And looking towards the future, the gas-powered leaf blower ban goes into effect on July 1st of this year. And I just want to note a couple of administrative notes. We plan, we are canceling the July meeting of the commission due to a lack of pressing items and the fact that we're shorthanded. There's just a number of reasons to do this. So enjoy your night off next month. And finally, I'd like to invite you all for refreshments immediately after the meeting in honor of departing Chair and Vice Chair Gazzoni and Al Dram respectively. So we've got some snacks, and we can hang out a little bit after the meeting. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Commissioner Chafe?
I have one question on the leaf blow, gas-powered leaf blower ban. How is that enforced? Is it through citizen complaints or something else?
Complaints, and it's enforced, and it's not, it doesn't penalize the guy holding the leaf blower. That's important to note. It penalizes whoever hired them. And so if you're a property owner and you hire a landscape contractor and they're using gas-powered leaf blowers, that responsibility falls ultimately falls on the hiring party. But obviously, there'd be warnings issued in advance of penalties being assessed.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, so with no further questions, now is the time for commissioners to let us know about any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest for any items this evening. Okay, with that done, I think we have an information item before we get to the public hearing, the update on the reach codes.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Nancy Humphrey. I'm the Environmental Program Supervisor within Public Works. And as such, I look at opportunities for reach codes or other actions that can help us mitigate our greenhouse gas emissions within the community. So reach codes, as you may know, reach codes are local ordinances that exceed or enhance state codes, state building codes, energy codes, green building, and they can be done at any time. They must be cost-effective. Depending on what part of the code it applies to, they may have to go and get registered with the, with the, what's that board? With a board. There's codes and standards. And they can be used to improve, as I say, the environmental performance of individual settings or community-wide. There are two main categories of reach codes. There are prescriptive reach codes, which are like the one that we had most recently that was rescinded. And there are performance-based reach codes. The performance-based reach codes don't tell you what to do, they tell you what standard you have to meet, either for energy efficiency or air quality. So that's about, that's about what I can say today. All right, any questions?
So what are the, is it you or is somebody else that's pursuing the idea of developing the new standards so that we can encourage all electric use?
Yeah, that would come through the Sustainability Committee, which I do staff. They have not put it on an agenda, but we can, I can put it on as a future item and see if they move it up, but it'll come through the Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, that was very helpful already. So around air quality, I know that there's probably some jurisdictional issues with regards to overlap between the city and the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. How does that work? Is it super complicated, or can the city basically do something and it just needs to be in alignment with what the air district is doing?
As far as I understand, we can regulate indoor air quality within the city.
Okay.
I'm not sure about outdoor air quality.
Okay. So, for example, the air district set a zero-knock standard for furnaces recently. So could the city do something similar for other appliances?
Theoretically, I think so. I think these are questions maybe better directed to the attorneys.
Sure, yeah. So as Nancy mentioned, there's kind of two approaches, right? We have kind of prescriptive, prescribed-based approaches and performance-based approaches, and those are avenues, both of those avenues would, you know, potentially result in reduced GHG emissions. And, you know, post this Berkeley case, a lot of cities are looking at, you know, what they can do now, and they're exploring, you know, different ways to address GHG emissions outside of simply prohibiting natural gas. So I suspect that we'll see more cities kind of explore these different pathways and, you know, come up with a variety of different methods within either a prescriptive code method or a performance code method.
So I guess what I would say is, at least me, one commissioner would like to recommend to you that you make a statement to the Sustainability Committee, that it should go on their agenda, that in my opinion is a pretty important issue, because all electric use incentives that are put in place make a difference, as an architect, make a difference to developers on the choices they make. And so subsequent projects that are in the planning now are affected by what the city might incentivize the developer to do. So I hope that the Sustainability Committee would recognize that this is something that's an important issue, and that was in place, now it's not in place, and so hopefully, and I know that it takes a while for these things to work up to the point where they're adopted by a city, so hopefully you can start that work now. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now it is, we're going into the public hearing section. No commissioners have stated anything about any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, so we'll just move on to the temporary women's emergency shelter item. And Muri, do you have a presentation for that?
Good evening, Chair Gazzoni and Commission. This is a fairly straightforward item. It's regarding a modification of a condition of approval regarding the term of, the length of the term of the use permit. So we are talking about 4300 San Pablo Avenue. This is a city-owned property which used to house the Recreation Department and has been used in the interim for several uses, which I will note in just a minute. And this is what it looks like on the San Pablo frontage and then the 43rd Street frontage. So in August of 2019, the Commission approved permits to allow for an emergency shelter for families, and this was operated till December 2020 by the East Oakland Community Project. Since April 21, the Council allowed Building Futures for Women and Children to allow for continued operation of the family front door coordinated entry system, mainly basically office functions, and the Building Futures ceased their operation at the site on August of 2022. Then in November of 2022, a women's shelter operated by Inside Housing in a then-known as Berkeley Food and Housing Project at Dwight Way in Berkeley was destroyed by fire, and Inside Housing requested temporary use of the site as a women's shelter. And on March, the Commission approved a use permit for Inside Housing for a term of one year as a condition of approval. Inside Housing has experienced delays in rehabilitation of the Dwight Way site and requested a three-month extension come March of this year. Our regulations do allow minor changes to the conditions of approval to be approved by the Community of Open Director. And if you may recall, you may have received, you would have received an email from Chad Smalley in December of last year announcing his intention to make a minor change to the term of the use permit, to extend that from March of 2023 to June of, sorry, March of 2024 to June of 2024. Having received no opposition from the Commission, he went ahead and did that extension administratively. Well, as it often turns out in construction business, there are further delays. There have been some staff issues, staffing issues as well, and we received another request to extend the permit from June till the end of the year for an additional six months. So we decided to bring this back to the Commission since now it's almost a year extension. And the findings that need to be made by the Commission are your standard use permit findings, and we believe that these can be made. They have been doing work. Inside Housing has no incentive to delay their work on Dwight's site. In addition, we have also not received any complaints from neighbors of the existing, at the existing facility at 4300 San Pablo. So that concludes my presentation, and we request that you extend the condition of approval for a new expiration date of December 31st, 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
There, is there no impact on the EH project?
Correct. There is no impact on that. They are quite far off in terms of obtaining funding.
Thank you, and my apologies, but to the city, to the attorney, I just realized my home is right at the 1,000-foot mark from this property, and so I'm wondering if there are any considerations. I know that I would have to recuse if I were within 500 feet of the project, but I was advised when I joined the Commission that between 500 and 1,000 feet, I should consult with your office. My, and my apologies, I did read this whole item, and I failed to.
That's okay.
Recognize that I was that close.
No, that's okay. And staff, normally, normally we catch these things too, so I apologize that we did not. Normally, city attorney's office's policy is not to provide conflict advice in the meeting, so out of an abundance of caution, I would say that you should probably recuse. I'll leave that up to you, but that's city attorney's office policy for this one.
Thank you. I apologize for doing this late, Mr. Chair, but I'm going to recuse myself from this item. My residence is at 105545th Street, and it's just about 1,000 feet away from this project. Do I need to leave the room?
No.
No, it's not a financial conflict. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. This is, the public hearing is now open at this time, and any members of the public who wish to comment on this item may do so for up to three minutes. Do we have any comments from the public? Any speaker cards or online comments? No. Okay, the time is 6:50, and the public hearing section is closed. Okay, now I'll bring the item back to the Commission for deliberation. Does anybody have any comments or discussion on this item?
I'm happy to support, and I'd be happy to make a motion if there's no other comments.
I don't think there's a lot of controversy here. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, could we have a roll call on that?
Yes, on the motion made by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Commissioner Henme. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez is recused. Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram.
Aye.
And Chair Gazzoni.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, then we will move on to the next item, which is the acquisition of park property findings at 1245 Powell.
Okay, so this is an item that requires the Commission to make findings of compliance with the general plan in regards to acquisition of property by the city. And the location that we are looking at is 1245 Powell Street. It's right on, bounded by Powell on the Northern Property Line and Bodry and Vallejo on the Eastern and Western Property Line, and along the Southern Property Line, you can see that it is adjacent to the Stanford Avenue Park. So at this, the 1245, there's an existing Boyd's Auto Body, which is a longstanding institution of a city, and this business has been put on market for sale since spring of 2023. The city has now an opportunity to acquire this 12,800-square-foot property, which is about 0.3 mile, square miles, and it's, like I mentioned, adjacent to the Stanford Avenue Park. The parcel is zoned, mixed uses with residential, where both indoor and outdoor recreation uses are permitted. In addition, the city's parks and recreation strategic plan identifies the expansion of the site, I'm sorry, that identifies the expansion of Stanford Avenue Park as a park opportunity, and it specifically identifies this 1245 Powell Street by stating the boundaries of this property. This is the, some of the recent pictures along with the Powell Street frontage of Boyd's Body Shop. This is the Bodry Street frontage. You can see the park adjacent to it. This is along the Vallejo Street frontage, and at the bottom is the Stanford Avenue View. So as I've mentioned, there's a government section which says that a city cannot acquire real property without finding that the purpose and the extent of the acquisition conform with the general plan. And the general plan goals with which the project is consistent, one is related to creating a comprehensive open space system, the other relates to the goal of creating new public spaces in the public rim that serves as focal points of the community, and this site, I think, is, very appropriately does that. In addition, the general plan policies with which the project is consistent are, one that talks about increasing park acreage to meet the growing population needs, and the other one is creation, again, of new smaller open spaces to be used as public plazas and places. Again, this site does comply with that. And like I mentioned, in addition to the general plan, the parks' strategic plan also identifies this as a park opportunity. In terms of CQ review, it is exempt under the common sense exemption, and in terms of next steps, if the city is successful in acquiring property, a use permit and design review would be needed to develop the parcel for park and recreation use. And through this process, we anticipate community meetings to be held to solicit input. It will reviewed, it will be reviewed by Parks and Recreation Committee, and of course, it will come to the Planning Commission for study sessions and, of course, subsequent approval. So with that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending that the Commission adopt the. Staff is recommending that the Commission adopt the resolution and make the findings that are required in order for the city to acquire this property located at 1245 Powell Street. Chad, did you have anything to add? This is his deal, by the way.
Thanks. Noel, you summarized it well. This is, this is a good opportunity for the city, and so we'd like to acquire it if possible, so.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from the Commission? Go ahead.
My question is about whether the environmental status of this site and whether the city has done any Phase 1 or 2 looking at
The city is in the due diligence process now, in the context of the transaction.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, with no other questions, it's time for public comment again. If there's any public comment on this particular item, you have three minutes to do so. Doing speaker cards either, it seems. Okay, it is 6:56, and the public comment period is over, and we'll return this to the Commission for discussion. Any comments?
I think this is a really good situation and opportunity, and I hope we can get the deal as soon as possible.
Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. With a city as small as ours, we are constrained in our opportunities to acquire new land, to add to parks, or to, really to expand our existing parks or add new ones, our parks and open space. So I think this is an incredible opportunity. I'm sad to see Boyd's go. I know they're a longstanding members of our community. They've been here longer than, I would say, 80 or 90% of our residents, so I want to thank them for being good community members and contributing to the landscape in Emeryville, and I hope we'll continue to enjoy that land more as parks and open space as the city evolves.
Okay. Ms. Ramy?
I just want to echo the comments about this being a good addition to the city, and I think, in particular, the fact that it provides frontage onto Powell for the park system is really nice, because previously it was hidden. So it will really greatly increase the visibility of our park system and will really accent or improve the quality of Powell. So I think it's fantastic.
I concur. I think this is a fantastic opportunity. This is the sort of thing we wish we were doing every day. So with that said, is anybody interested in doing a motion, or do you have further comment? Comment?
Yeah, I just want to note that this is, supporting all of my fellow Commissioners' comments on it, this is a great opportunity, as everybody seems to agree. Just to add on that a little bit, this is a park that is connected to Pellwood Park, which is part of our Greenway, which I'm, you know, a huge fan of promoting and enhancing. And one of the things that it does is, A, yes, it gives frontage to Powell, but also just a couple of Parks and Rec meetings ago, we were discussing this little triangle area of the adjacent park that nobody knows what to do with yet, and all of a sudden having more contiguous space is going to be a real multiplier for this park, and also gives you a little bit more of a destination if you were to continue from the Greenway or the juncture around Pellwood Park. Over here, instead of a linear park, you actually have a place to go, other than the dog park, which, we have another dog park. It's a pretty great system so far, and this is a great opportunity.
And just to add to this parade of comments, Chair Gazzoni will remember that when the two of us were on the Park and Rec Committee, I think it was just prior to COVID lockdowns, we were about to hold some community meetings to explore how Stanford Park could be more responsive to the changing needs of that community, brainstorming about potential natural play areas, providing opportunities across the lifespan, so both for younger children, but also for elders and people working in the area. So I see this as an amazing opportunity to revisit some of those conversations and really think about how the neighborhood is changing and how we can grow that continuity.
Any other comments? All right, anybody motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, anybody would care to second this? Okay.
Great, thank you on the motion made by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Commissioner Wax to approve the resolution. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram.
Aye.
And Chair Gazzoni.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, so that was that. Now we move on to the next item, which is a little more complex, and that is the update
Good evening, Commissioners. I am presenting today on the update to the accessory dwelling units ordinance. So just as a really general overview, accessory dwelling units are residential units that are associated with a principal residential use, so they are considered accessory to the primary units on the site. They have been codified in state law since 1988 in some capacity, but it is only over this last few decades that multiple bills have streamlined and redefined what these units specifically are and how local law needs to approve and review accessory dwelling units. So as far as that pertains to the city, Emeryville first adopted a secondary residential units ordinance, Article 14 of our planning code, in 2013. A number of state laws were passed in 2016 related to secondary residential units, so the city then adopted amendments to the ordinance in 2017. And then again, in 2019, the state adopted a bundle of six ADU streamlining laws that kind of serve as the backbone for how we deal with and review ADUs today. And so we, again, adopted an ADU ordinance, still Article 14, in response to those laws in December of 2020. We then submitted the adopted ordinance to the Housing and Community Development for review, for their review, and then, I'm just looking to make sure. And then in December 2023, we made additional minor revisions to the ADU ordinance as part of the objective standards package. And now, in January 2024, HCD did provide a letter of review and findings for the December 2020 ADU ordinance, that it is inconsistent with state law. So why are we doing this update today? The state law requires that the city consider HCD's findings and requires us to amend the ADU ordinance as necessary. Since 2020, there's been no less than eight new ADU laws that have passed. There's actually more than that, but these are the ones with substantive changes to the requirements around ADUs and how we review them. I will note, so SB 477 was adopted just this year in March. It did not make it into the staff report, but this actually renumbers all of the ADU and JDU laws for easier reference. So they have moved from their previous location to a completely different location. So if it has made it into the PowerPoint, you'll see some places where I've crossed out the previous citation and added the new one, but it will be a little confusing, and you can refer to the attached memo for additional context on that. So HCD provided 11 findings for inconsistencies with state law. We did have a meeting with HCD in February of 2024 to discuss the findings, and we determined that only nine of these findings actually require changes to our ADU ordinance. The general key topics for this are around clarifying what is allowed at minimum for an ADU, how many and what types of ADUs and JDUs are permitted, and in what areas, what the maximum height and size of ADUs is permitted to be, and then some general cleanup items to clarify our regulations and make it clear that we are complying with state requirements. So these are all of the changes that we've made by section as well as by findings, so I'll go through them very quickly. We did send the resolution and the proposed changes to the ordinance to HCD, and they provided comment on it, yes, just yesterday. So they, we have made two changes in response to that, which you can, again, refer to the memo for. So we have updated government code references in the draft resolution as required to match what has been adopted in SB 477. And then we've also just included some clarification that any ADU that is converted from an existing structure can be expanded by 150 square feet. The ADU ordinance is exempt from environmental review from CEQA under the Public Resources Code. And then the findings are as follows. The proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan. The proposed amendment is necessary for public health, safety, and welfare, or will benefit the public. The proposed amendment has been reviewed in compliance with CEQA. And then if there are any changes to the zoning maps, which there is not, the property is suitable. We do recommend that the Planning Commission approves this resolution that will recommend to the City Council that they adopt the proposed amendments into the planning regulations. I do have different, each individual section and the revisions that are being made also in this PowerPoint presentation, if you have any questions or would like to see something in specific.
Okay, thank you. Essentially, this is the harmonization thing, so there's not a lot of latitude. It's just what wording we harmonize with.
Yeah, we really didn't make any discretionary changes. The goal is just to address the findings and make sure we comply, so there's
Okay, thank you.
Not a lovely way.
Given that, are there any questions? Um?
We're gonna review. You're gonna review everything.
Are we here? We can if somebody has specific concerns, but I think since it's mostly harmonization, I don't think we can, I mean, I think at most we would be able to say we would want to agree with the state law with this change or state regulation. I mean, we can't say, oh, we don't want to do that.
I just have one question. So it seems like we can have with the new rules, no height limit, right? So I want to understand, like, when there's no height limit, somebody can design, like, six?
So there is a height limit. So initially, the height limit that we had in the ADU ordinance was 16 feet, which was generally applied as the lowest, the minimum height requirement in state law as of, I can't remember exactly which year. Under the new state laws, basically, there are different categories where heights apply, depending on if you're attached or detached. It gets more nuanced than that, depends on how close you are to public transit. And so for that reason, we've taken out of the minimum, but we do have height requirements noted elsewhere, and those would still apply to any ADU built in Emeryville.
I see. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
It's page six in the memorandum.
I unfortunately don't have the full memorandum in front of me. Can you provide some more specifics on that?
No, I was just referring Commissioner Dram to the citation. And for the public, it's, the height, maximum height limit shall be 20 feet for a detached accessory dwelling unit and 25 feet for an attached accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions on this? Okay, now would be the time for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, at, the time is 7:11, and the public comment is closed. I'll bring this back to the Commission for deliberation.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that this is a requirement for us to conform with state law, and I don't see any of the changes that are ones that would be, that I would object to.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, do we have a motion to approve this? Commissioner Johnson?
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Seconded.
Okay, do we have a roll call?
Yes, and the motion to recommend to the City Council to approve the ordinance made by Commissioner Johnson and seconded by Vice Chair Dram. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram.
Aye.
And Chair Gazzoni.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, and now we move on to Planning Commissioner's comments. Do we have any comments? Commissioner Martinez?
I just wanted to enter into the record my gratitude for Commissioners Dram and Gazzoni, or Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you so much for your service to the city. It's such an important job, and it's, the gratitude I have for everyone who steps up and into these roles is immense, and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would second that. Thank you very much. But I also wondered if Commissioner Johnson might be willing to, I read some of your background, but I wondered if you would be willing to provide a little bit of your experience and also why you're interested in being a Commissioner.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Henme. So I've been a land use planner my entire adult life, more or less, it seems like, going back to the mid-'80s, and moved to the Bay Area originally in 2011 and worked for the jurisdictions of Concord and then Berkeley. And then family obligations took me away, but this past summer, or actually a year ago, I had the opportunity to move back to the Bay Area and came back to Emeryville. So I lived in Emeryville the entire time. I had been in the Bay Area previously, and just, to me, this is heaven. It's like, you know, Goldilocks, I felt like, the first time I came here, and I drove down Horton and passed the Sherwin-Williams building, and it's sad state at the time, but it just seemed like a perfect place for me and my husband, and we loved living here and are very happy to have the opportunity to move back. And we moved away right prior to the significant construction of the, and redevelopment of the Sherwin-Williams site, but both my husband and I were active in the community, and so it's so rewarding to see how that plan has come to fruition. And every day I walk along the Greenway and see the diverse community. I was telling Maru that, you know, it just shows that planning policies actually do work and make a positive change on the community. So seeing so many young people and, you know, everybody using the Huchin Park also was fortunate enough to get a plot enough to get a plot in the new community garden, which is beautiful. I would encourage everybody to walk by if they have an opportunity and to see how many flowers, as well as vegetables, are being planted there. It's just, just really remarkable. And so that sense of community, the place, the, all the volunteers that, and the, I think the influence of the artist community, all result in this being just the perfect community, and I wanted to support it by, you know, volunteering in this role.
Okay, and I will just say, stepping down for a number of reasons, but I really am hoping to come back at some point, just taking a little time off and getting some space in my life. But I just wanted to say it's been a real opportunity and a pleasure to do this, and I wanted to say thank you very much to the city staff and attorney, your expertise, dedication, imagination, and just really willingness to answer all kinds of questions clearly and thoroughly. Emeryville wouldn't be what it is without you, and I really, really appreciate that. And then I also want to express my gratitude to all my commission, co-commissioners. I've learned a lot from all of you and your various realms of expertise that you bring to this, and I thank you all, and I hope we're past costs again. And I wish you all the best in continuing to make Emeryville as good as it can be. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, at, oh, go ahead. Okay.
I have a, like, one-page speech for you. Okay, Dear Chair, Commissioners, and Staff, it has been a great pleasure to serve alongside and contribute to the community of Emeryville. Having lived in and worked in many countries and cities, I can confidently say that Emeryville stands out. As one of the best places I've ever been, the city's excellent management and great potential make a truly remarkable place. The positive changes in Emeryville, both past and future, contribute to its vibrant and dynamic character. I have witnessed firsthand the community dedication, innovation, and commitment to the continuous improvement, and it has been an honor to be part of this journey. I have learned a lot during my time here and am very grateful for the opportunity to Throughout my service, I experienced true equity, liberty, and democracy. In Emeryville, it does not matter where you are coming from, you can be part of the American society. I am also so glad that I immigrate to this amazing land where such opportunities are possible. This is not normal. You know, I've been in, like, almost eight countries, and it was very hard to be like this place, like, even like, work or get a job or get a business. Here is very, like, different, I think, compared to all of the places I've been. I would like to extend my gratitude to Chair Gazzoni, Ex-Chair and Commissioner, Commissioner Wax, and Commissioner Henme. For the leadership and collaboration, I also want to thank Miro, Chad, sorry, Chad, Miro, I forgot, like, Chad, Miro, and Christine, Christine, and other staff members for the, I missed it, sorry, for the support and contributions. Additionally, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to Ex-Meier and Commissioner Martinez for considering me as part of this wonderful community. I hope my contributions have added value and made some positive impact. Thank you all again for support and friendship. I hope to have the opportunity to serve in Emeryville again in near future. I always cherish my time with Emeryville Planning Commission. Warm regards, Al Dram.
There are no more comments at this point. It is 7:20 and the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Recording stopped.